Good evening. I'd like to call to order this the regular Town Council meeting for Tuesday, April 9th, 2019. Please rise for a moment of silence. Will I have the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call to roll?
Certainly. Fishbein?
Here.
Laughin?
Here.
Laterno?
Here.
Marone?
Here.
Morgenstein?
Here.
Chortel?
Here.
Testa?
Zandry?
Here.
Chairman Savoni?
Here. Counselor Testa did advise me that he will not be able to make tonight's meeting. On to item three, the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move. Will you approve or accept consent agenda items A through N?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. The consent agenda passes. Item four, there are no items. Remove from the consent agenda. On to public question and answer. Okay. Mr. Burkhardt? Approach one of the microphones. Give us your name and address for the record, even though you and I know each other.
Robert Burkhardt, 68 Simpson Avenue, Wallingford. I wanted to speak on the tolls.
That is going to be an item for discussion, so if you want to save that for when we get to that item on the agenda, you can do that.
I'll do that. Did you want me to sing "God Bless America" verse before?
Thank you for the offer. We have pledged to the flag.
Okay.
But you can speak now, or you can hold your comments until we get to that item. It's your choice. You're welcome either way.
Well, I'll wait till the topic comes up then.
Okay. Thank you. Any other?
Daryl Stancun, 18, Old Village Circle. I have a question about this summer. Are we going to be bringing back some of my requests to the table of getting some real rock bands this summer to play on the green? I know that I've asked over the past couple of years, and we've had the Twilight Zone band play, and there are no offense at all against these local bands, but you got Hampton, Hartford, New Haven bringing in these big names to play on their greens, and we're not doing it, and we have a lot more money than these other cities and towns. So I think we should try to get one of these big names to play this summer and try to get the town rocking and rolling like the other towns and cities. So if we get like a big name down here, I really appreciate it. And there's a lot of other people I talked to that would like to see that also in the town.
In the proposed budget for Park and Rec Department, there's not a change big enough to pay for one of those bands. It's the same, it's a similar sized budget to what we've had in other years.
And the other thing was about the homeless shelter. If we could try to keep that going and open all year round and not send them to New Haven, Meriden, other homeless shelters that aren't in town, and we should be taking care of our own here. If they're a Wallingford resident, we shouldn't be kicking them to New Haven where they've got their own problems and concerns, and so does Meriden and the other local towns and cities. And I've really been saying this for a while. I think we should try to keep that homeless shelter running all year round and, you know, keep these guys from, and women, people. There was a lady with a baby at Stop and Shop out front earlier, you know, for money, and you see everybody all over this town with signs that don't have work and money and whatnot. So I think we need to get a better program than what we have now of keeping the homeless shelter open part-time in only a few months a year. I mean, we need this thing open all year round. We've got a hard economy going on. You can't get a job out there. You've got people suffering with these high taxes, and it's harder to live. So I think we need to start looking out for each other and get more programs for these people from the graveyard sleeping around downtown and all over the place on the streets. I would really like to see that happen, you guys. I've been requesting this for a couple of years, and the population is just growing bigger. And I was told before there was no veterans homeless in Connecticut, and come to find out there's hundreds and thousands of veterans all over the streets. So that was a nonsense lie, too. But we really need to start really addressing these issues because they're people, too, and we've got to take care of them.
So I think it was two years ago that the Wallingford Emergency Shelter began allowing its services to be run by Columbus House. So Columbus House is the group to talk to. They run our homeless shelter now.
No, I understand, but the Columbus House is in New Haven. That's a separate city and town. I mean, we should have our own Columbus House, Wallingford House. We shouldn't have to be asking other cities to do our job.
The property is still in Wallingford. It's still purposed, it's still for the same purpose. It's just that the administration of it is run by the organization that is Columbus House.
I understand that, but that's another city, and this is a different district and town. We should have our own local homeless shelter open all year round for our residents in town. We can't be just throwing them into other cities. They've got enough problems.
I didn't say I disagree with you. I was just telling you who to really talk to about this.
Well, I'm requesting a council. If you guys could talk to them, and I've been asking this for two years now, if we could try to get some help with this.
I'll figure out who to get in touch with.
Okay, and I appreciate that. And also, these kids, I know, I was here at the meeting a week ago. It passed the ordinance that, you know, the kids can't buy vaping tobacco products to 21. That's great and everything, but what are we really doing for these kids? I mean, okay, raising the age, but there's no real big programs in town. I mean, yes, we have a small coalition and whatnot, but that's not enough. I mean, these kids are walking around aimlessly. There's not enough for them to do. And yeah, you could raise the age higher and higher, but we could have a better program for these adolescents and these millennials that are having to deal with their own crisis that I think are being ignored. If we could try to, I tried to mention before, get the senior center involved instead of just the elderly and have them have a recreation with them over there would be a big help between the elderly and with the adolescents.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else for the public question and answer period? Seeing no takers, we will move on to item six, which is discussion and possible action regarding a Town Council resolution opposing tolls in Connecticut. Counselor Fishbein, this is your item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, as I read the news and I hear of how other towns through their legislative bodies are talking about tolls, many of them have proposed resolutions. Some of them have passed. Some of them have been tabled. You know, I thought as a member of this body, it would be appropriate for us to at least have the discussion as to whether or not we wanted to take a position along those lines. So I did draft a proposed resolution. And if I may, to read it for the record, and it would be my intent to move it.
You may read it for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's titled Resolution Opposing Tolls in Connecticut, and it says, "Be it resolved, whereas the governor and many members of the state legislature have signaled support for the placement of tolls on Connecticut's major highways; and whereas many residents of Wallingford use Interstate 691, 91, 84, and Route 15, each day for work, family obligations, and pleasure to travel to surrounding towns and cities throughout the region; and whereas the residents of Connecticut deserve the establishment and maintenance of a world-class transportation infrastructure; but the costs of implementation of such infrastructure ought not to be largely funded by those who can least afford to pay it; and whereas the implementation of tolls will result in a significant amount of traffic on and additional maintenance of Wallingford Town Roads as drivers attempt to avoid the cost burden of tolls; and whereas the implementation of tolls will naturally result in added costs for products purchased by residents of Wallingford; and whereas the residents of Connecticut already pay more in taxes and fees than most residents in other states around the country; and whereas road and bridge work costs for construction in Connecticut are the fifth highest in the country; and administration costs are the highest in the country with no resolve, now therefore be it resolved that the Wallingford Town Council opposes the imposition of tolls on its residents and urges its elected representatives in the state legislature to oppose any measure that would impose tolls on our residents. So moved."
Is there a second for the motion?
Moved and seconded by Counselor Marone. I will start, if I may. Counselor Fishbein, I know you represent us in Hartford, and I think you and I agree on this topic, and I suspect that if this gets to a vote for the legislature, that you are going to vote against it. I'm pretty well counting on that at this point. And I could certainly communicate my position to the other representatives who represent Wallingford. I think we all have the ability to do that. Whether or not we do it by this resolution, I think we still have the ability to communicate our lack of support for the tolls. And I'll tell you personally that my wife commutes to Hartford daily, and this is certainly going to have an impact on my household. So whether or not your resolution passes, I will certainly thank you for your support against tolls in the legislature. With that, I open it up to discussion for other counselors. Counselor Zandry?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So because this is a discussion, Craig, I kind of want to bounce some questions back to you because I'm not a big fan of having to put tolls on the roads either. But my question comes from, how do we pay for this world-class highway system that we've got and we want to keep and we want to maintain? So as I kind of bring up my points, I want to ask you some questions. So first and foremost, to me, which is the most important thing, is did we ever, we had a resolution during the election for the vote that went out to the people to put a lockbox on the transportation fund. Now, I know that was a vote that went out to the people was technically informal because they wanted to get a read on it. That did not make a law out of anything. That's something that has to be brought up. Is that not correct?
Well, actually, there were a few versions of that lockbox language, and I voted against that provision that was on the ballot because it really had no teeth. So the problem with the lockbox that did pass is there's no guarantee, first of all, that any money that's raised for the intent of transportation makes it into the lockbox, and the definition of what it would be used for is loosey-goosey. So one of the versions that unfortunately failed on party lines was to define a transportation project as anything that was being spent on transportation as of 2017. That definition is left open to whomever determines what is a transportation program or project. So the fear along those lines, and one of the examples of the fact that the lockbox that's passed is full of holes, is in the future somebody may say, well, the state police, they patrol our highways, and therefore payroll for the state police is a transportation project, and for providing their vehicles to patrol the highways is a transportation program. So, you know, that becomes a problem. Plus, as was admitted as recently as a month ago, any money in that lockbox can't actually be swept out of there.
Okay. And that's really where that question was going, because I think one of the main fears of anybody is going to be, we get money into the transportation fund, what makes it stay there? It doesn't get raided. So I think that's just as important of an issue as the tolls themselves. My other questions come from, obviously, deriving the revenue for everybody that uses these roads, because right now, the people that live here are the only ones who pay for it. We're the only ones who pay for it. We buy the fuel in this state. It's taxed at, I want to have the numbers that I have in front of me. We pay in Connecticut for the normal, the regular fuel, not diesel fuel. The number that I have is 44 cents a gallon in taxes. Is that still the correct number I have? Do I have the correct number?
I believe so.
Okay. So while there's a few states that are higher, there aren't many of them. Pennsylvania is at 58 cents, California 56, Washington at 49, Hawaii at 48, New York, which has a bucket full of tolls, is ahead of us by a couple of pennies at 46, and New Jersey is 3 cents behind us at 41, and they also have a lot of tolls. And the reason I bring up those two particular states is because I drive through them all the time. I can put $10 worth of, 10 gallons worth of fuel in my car and go all the way to Reston, Virginia, and I basically paid the state of Connecticut $4.40 in taxes. And all those other states that I drive through don't care that I don't buy fuel from them, because I pay, just New Jersey as an example, I paid them the last time I went through one way, $13.85 to use the Jersey Turnpike, and I paid Maryland $12 to go over two bridges. So what is the solution? If it's not going to be tolls, how do we get the money for all the other traffic that's coming through this state? Because I will tell you, at 2:00 on a Friday, eastbound on 95, it's a sea of New York plates going to the Cape, and we're not getting 10 cents for them. They're not stopping. They're going right through. And like I said, I drive all the way to Reston, don't buy any fuel, but I pay those states way, way more in tolls than I do in any fuel tax, even if I were to fill up. So help me find a way to get to where you already are. How do we effectively grab all of this money that is not being paid by the people that use these roads and don't spend a dime here?
So there's a few issues there, and while I'm not an expert on this total concept, it would be a great argument if we didn't already have one of the highest gas taxes in the country. It would be a great argument if we weren't given hundreds of millions of dollars by the federal government because we don't have tolls. So the fact is that we are appropriating about $1.6 billion every year, or I believe it's a combination of the two years, for transportation already. Part of the problem is the priorities and where the money is being spent. So there is money being appropriated. Was it two years ago, I think we swept $38 million out of the Special Transportation Fund to go to the General Fund? So...
Well, I agree, and I agree with you. That was where my point was earlier, when I said to you, we've got to stop doing that. But it doesn't address, it doesn't address all the other people that are using roads. And even to your point of the federal funds, other states get federal funds as well. We've gotten more historically because we haven't had the tolls, and the funds that we've had federally are, the way that I understand it, and please correct me if I'm wrong, we're not subject to lose them if we use congestion tolling.
That's, well, congestion tolling is an issue in and of itself, but yes, that has been represented. And the problem, though, with congestion tolling is, you know, tolling, the price would go up based upon more cars on the road.
Right.
Okay. So when are there more cars on the road? That's when people who live in this state, for the most part, are traveling to and from work. So what it ends up doing is more heavily taxing those residents in this state when it's your intent to essentially tax those that are not from the state.
I have a solution for that, however. Way back in the day, we used to have toll plates on cars. You could buy a toll plate, you put it on the front of your car, and you paid a flat fee to use the roads. We had them on the Berlin Turnpike, I mean, not the Berlin Turnpike, excuse me, the Merritt Parkway, because my father used to use it to go through to exit 65, because everybody else would get off at 66 to avoid the toll. With the EZ Pass system, it would seem to me, if we had to go the way of tolls, just to make a cap, it's like a flat fee. The worst, the worst thing about having the toll plate and the flat fee in theory was, what if you didn't drive enough? You basically paid upfront to have a toll plate on your car, and maybe you ended up with a job in town, you never used the highways. What you do is you make it progressive. A dollar toll here, $2 there, when you reach some X number amount, let's just call it 300 bucks. When I get hit, when I'm driving around and I hit 300 bucks and I'm in state, the EZ Pass doesn't register anymore because I've hit my maximum for the year.
I think the feds would have a significant problem with that.
Well, I think, and I know, I'd like to know myself, because we used to do it. We used to do it. I'd like to get an answer to that, because if we end up with the tolls, whether we like it or not, there should definitely be a solution, just like you said. The congestion tolling is going to hit our folks the worst, and it should be spread out. Right now, we're hit the worst because we have this high tax, which if we're getting money from tolls, we should be able to lower, because we know that they're not going to buy the fuel. Or if it's low enough, people might actually stop and buy fuel here. When Jersey's taxes were lower, I would go through and I'd fuel up there, because it was 20 cents a gallon less. Now it's the same, so there's no benefit. But then people might stop. They might get a sandwich. They might get a pack of smokes. They might get a lottery ticket, things that bring in revenue to the stores that sell it and the taxes that we collect on all those sin, the sin taxes that we've got.
So nobody has opined that tolls will help economic development in this state. So that would be a new way of looking at tolls, that somehow somebody's going to want to come to the state because we have tolls or that that's going to...
That's not what I said. What I said was, if they're driving through anyway, and our fuel tax is lower, Jersey's fuel tax used to be lower. I'd get hit with their toll anyway because I had to go that way anyhow. If I'm a New Yorker and I'm going to the Cape, got to go through here anyhow, I'm going to get whacked by the tolls if we get them anyhow. But the fuel tax got dropped by X number of cents. It makes it cheaper to buy in Connecticut than New York where I live. Maybe I'll pull over. Maybe I'll get a coffee while I'm filling up.
So currently what's being presented is, there is no potential cut to the fuel tax. There is talk about a penny a gallon cut. So if you see that to be a benefit to some people, you know, so be it. But at the other end, they're getting whacked $15. And the tolling that's considered here will be the largest tolling system of any state in the country. It's between 54, and there has been, when we started with this, it was 121 various tolls. No other state has that many tolls. Essentially, it becomes a mileage tax. So, you know, I enjoy the debate, you know, but, and there'll be an informational forum here tomorrow night, you know, which may answer some of your questions, and certainly come on down and, you know.
Well, I intend to. Of course, I'm loaded with meetings this week, just like you are. But I guess I'm going to leave, because I'm going to leave with one more question, though. What are you going to do with a guy like me? I got an electric car. Last year, for the first quarter of the year, I paid the state of Connecticut about $77 by driving 6,100 miles because I had to buy fuel for my cars that burned fuel. This year, I only had to buy 28 gallons of fuel so far this year because I mainly used my electric car. The state got $12.48 for me. I'm not paying for the roads I'm on. And even though, you know, myself and a dozen other people with electric cars, mine's full-blown electric. There's hybrids out there that are also contributing to this. That's going to go up exponentially. As the technology increases for those vehicles and the range, I get 240 miles on a fully electric car, and nobody, almost nobody drives like me. Short of a salesman, I go around the lot in the car, and I don't have a problem. These cars are going to become more and more prevalent. There's going to be less and less fuel to be bought and less and less money going into that transportation fund. I still don't agree that tolls is the entire answer, but there needs to be a solution to this problem.
I tend to agree, and, you know, perhaps looking at a hot lane or something like that, maybe something. But, you know, as far as the electric cars, that's all, in my opinion, part of social engineering. You know, we use tax dollars, we use tax incentives to push people to use electric cars because they're better for the environment and all of that stuff. So, you know, maybe, you know, there's certain fees when I go buy a car that has a combustion engine, you know, and those fees don't appear when I buy an electric car. That's the government getting involved with the marketplace.
I presume you're talking about the $7,500 rebate for the cars, which is going away, because most of those, most of those companies are already pushed beyond their sales points for those. The fact that the generation of people that have them right now, these cars are going to start selling themselves. I've got wipers, lights, brakes. That's it. There's no oil change. There's no transmission to flush. There's almost no cost to this car. When you normally get a car and there's a page for every 10,000 miles for the service, I have one page, five lines. It looks like an Excel spreadsheet. There's nothing to do to this car. I'm going to save money on this car by the time I'm done with it. But I didn't know that until I got introduced to the car, and it took the rebate to get me there. I'll be the first one to admit it, because it brought the cost of that car within $6,000 of another type of brand-new car that's got a regular engine and system in it. And the reason I bring all these points up, again, I don't want the tolls here, but I also don't want these roads failing the way that they're failing right now. We need a solution. And I'm looking to the guys in Hartford, guys like you and the ladies that are there, too. We need a solution. It's going to be all-encompassing, because it's not just Connecticut residents that use the roads, but it is definitely them that count on them to get to work. So I don't think that them bum rushing the tolls out is a good idea, but I don't think just the opposition to them is the right idea either. We need something in the middle. We need a solution. And I'm counting on people like you up there to ask those questions because it's got to get resolved. Because the only other thing that I see being able to fund these roads is a gas tax that jumps 75 cents a gallon to cover the money that's needed to maintain these roads. And we definitely can't have that.
That's it?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Fishbein?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, the whole notion of bringing the resolution to the Town Council is open and transparent discussion. You know, I recently got a letter from the mayor as a representative saying that with regard to marijuana, saying that the community of Wallingford is opposed to the legalization of marijuana. You know, we never had that discussion up here. So, you know, I was a little troubled when I saw that, which, you know, I might align myself with the mayor's position for various reasons. You know, to say that the community has a position, and we haven't had an open forum, I don't know. So, you know, I think the resolution is appropriate. Certainly, it was last November, in the wake of, you know, just before an election, and a resolution was put before us, and it wasn't even about an appropriate or the correct bill. So, you know, I think legislative bodies all over this state, all over the country, various times do pass resolutions. You know, that resolution that this body passed had something to do with Congress. This, tolls are going to affect everybody in this town in some way, shape, or form. Whether or not they're actually driving on the road, the products that they buy at the store are going to pay more. Our taxes are going to go up because of it. You know, we give mileage allowances through collectively bargained contracts. You know, do you think they're going to go down? Absolutely not. They're going to go up, because the employees that we have that utilize the roads are going to say that they're paying tolls. So it's going to directly affect all of us in town. You know, I like the discussion. I like having the open discussion. But, you know, I thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Certainly. Anyone else on the council? With that, I'll go to the public. Please raise your hand. If everybody wants to speak, line up at the microphones, and I'll call the microphones at alternating points. Mr. Burkhardt, you go first. Robert Burkhardt, 68 Simpson Avenue. Um, I've got a couple of things I'd like to share with the people. Sean, I appreciate what you're doing. I think you're representing the people in a good way by bringing this up and I'm sure it's not popular with some of your, uh, people up at the legislature, but I knew you had it in you. Okay, so these monstrosities that are already built, this is a question for you, Sean. If anyone hasn't seen it, this is what they look like. They really don't enhance the landscape. You can see them on the highways. Why were they built if the law hadn't been passed to have tolls? Why are they there? Does anyone know?
I, I'm, I'm sorry, I.
The towers are already up.
You're talking about the towers on either side of the highway?
Yeah. They're already up. They're, they're like, they're there. You can see, there's one right on 91 because you go north.
What I'm hearing from Counselor Fishbein is that those support.
Do they do other things?
They, they support cameras right now. There are cameras on them.
Let me put my glasses back on. A Hartford resident commuting on I-95 five days a week to New Haven, 38 miles each way during rush hour would pay 3.34 per round trip, $16.70 for a five-day work week. Multiply that by 48 weeks, assuming two weeks of vacation and a handful of holidays, and the cost per year would be $801, okay? This is, this is from the internet, so it must be true. Okay. Uh, I have water berry, but this one takes care of probably Wallingford better than most of the things we have here. Now, this other article, once again, like I said, it must be true because it's on the internet. Toll's would cost $430,000 per day in operating expenses. So who would run them? And that's the question from this article. Well, the thing I saw this morning, and the reason why I'm here is because I was on Fox News, that wonderful station. I was interviewed by Sean down at the food bag and I said, "I'm going to go to the meeting tonight. I just wish more people would come and, and talk, tell how they feel about it." Because it does, just like you said, affect all of us. I just got a new job working for the Hartford Yard Goats and I'm going to be traveling up there six days a week and it's definitely going to affect me. I'm working two jobs. I guess I'm going to be working one of the jobs because I'm going to, so I can pay for the tolls and the gas because gas just went up 30 cents in the last two weeks. The people that are getting hurt by this are the middle class, more so than anybody else, the working middle class. And it's time we stopped getting picked on. There's got to be a solution. I know, I know what Jason said is true. The roads are a mess. There's potholes everywhere. There's only as many potholes on 91 as there is on North Main Street. So we got to take care of these roads, but there's got to be another way. Now, remember a long time ago when we got Lotto, that was supposed to go to education. Is it? So, so is this toll money going to, is that going to go? Now, $430,000 a day, if you do the math, we're supposed to be making 800 million a year. If you do the math, we're, we're coming out behind. So, I mean, I can do math. I wasn't good at it. I'm an English person. I, I got my degree in English. If you do the math, we're not coming out ahead. There's got to be another solution to raise money. I know what Jason's saying is true. We got to fix these roads because I'm on them all the time and they're bad everywhere. Not just the I-91s, that they're bad on the side routes too. Now, we, out of all the states in New England, worked. We had industry going on here, but that's all going south because of taxes. And I, I worked at Vinnie's Deli for 12 years and we lost a lot of big clients because they, their taxes were cheaper in South Carolina and Kentucky and Tennessee and that hurt our business. That hurt our business. We did a lot of corporate accounts, but we still had lots of pharmaceutical reps that were buying lunches for doctors. The point is, it's the middle people and that's why I appreciate what you're doing because we've got to start looking out for middle-class America. You know, some people's not going to be a problem, but when a family of four is planning a day trip so they can spend some time together, something that's not done enough in, in this state, in this country, and they have, say they're going to the beach and they have to do their lunches ahead of time because they can't afford to have lunch down there. So they make their lunch, they do that and it comes out to maybe 20 bucks for the whole trip. And then they got to add another four or five dollars. Okay, so now what are we going to do? Skip Thursday's meal? We got to stop taking care of families. I come from a family of seven. My father worked three jobs. When I was little, I thought my name was shut up, your father was sleeping. But my father spent time with his family. He took us to the beach. Quality time. And that makes a difference in how a person is an individual. And if we don't start doing things that will enhance, enhance the family atmosphere, we're going to be in more trouble than we are right now. We've handed our life, lives over to computers. But we need to restructure the family structure so people in the family are sitting at the dinner table, talking to each other or going on a road trip and talking to each other in the car. We used to count license plates. So I do know there was cars from other states here. I don't know. When, when this was first proposed, we were just taxing trucks and things from other states. Is that correct? Okay, what's I say? Once again, it's on this piece of paper, so it must be true.
I'm, I'm not sure that's how it was proposed to the legislature. Now, I'll defer to Counselor Fishbein, but I think that was the campaign promise of the government.
Okay. Well, that makes sense. So that's about all I have to say, just to know that this will affect not just, you know, I'm, I'm thinking for me, just like Jason's was talking, thinking of himself when he's talking about your car, how it hurts you, but we need to start taking care of our families. Because that's where our structure comes from. That's what makes us a great country, our families. And some of it's deteriorating. And this is one of the things is not going to help because it's, you know, it may not seem like a lot of money, 800 dollars a year, but that's your trip to Key West for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mark Davis, 31 O'Edet Drive. I live there with my wife, Liz. And, um, I think everything I heard tonight from the audience and the councils are valid. But I remember in 1985, on 95 North, the Manus Bridge. I was there with my brother, going, going to work in Stanford. Now, my problem is, at that time was, it was a crisis and they fixed it. Everything we, everything said tonight is, is, is valid. The problem I have is, we want to give the state, the state government in Hartford more money. I personally can't trust them. They had an opportunity in 1985 to address this. That's the problem. The problem is not, do we need tolls? Do we need the money? Of course we need the money. The problem is, I can't trust the people in Hartford to do the right thing. They've proven themselves that they can't be trusted. And, and I'd be remiss if anybody in this room is going to, is going to say that you, you feel confident with your state government. They are, they are what we have. I can't trust them and I won't give them, I don't think they have earned our trust. 1985 was a long time ago. Why are we still discussing this 2019? I think that's a reasonable observation, experience. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Bob Beaumont, 25 Maplewood Avenue. Firstly, I commend Counselor Fishbein for drawing up the resolution. Couldn't agree with you more on it. To a couple of Mr., of Counselor Zandry's points, there's no doubt about it. We need to be able to fix the roads. There's no ifs, ands or buts about it. I do not believe the tolls are the best bet. Uh, I agree that it would be nice to have some of the out-of-state people paying. Not a problem. That's how they, that's how the tolls were initially suggested during the election campaign. Since then, it's become apparent that everybody's going to be paying them. And the ones who are really going to be paying it are going to be the citizens of Connecticut. Yes, there will be some help from out-of-state. There's no doubt about that. One of the things we need to address is why are our expenses to administer the roads, to administer construction, why are they about the highest in the country? Many times more than almost anybody else. That's where there is one problem. Implementing tolls is not going to go ahead and solve that. Implementing tolls is just going to mean there's more money available and we're going to end up not running things the way we should, not running them in a business-like manner. And that's one of the things that, that there is a problem in many levels of government throughout the country. Run things like a business. Try to find the best way to do it. Try to find the way to reduce costs. Administrative costs that we have to go ahead and do any work on highways is absolutely insane and should not be like that. One could say that, well, fine, you know, it can be, you know, there've been suggestions made that the, we don't need tolls because we can go ahead and bond and do it. And I don't like the idea of bonding and I understand that 40% of the state transportation fund is for bond expenses as stands now. That being said, really you are paying back in cheaper dollars. If you take a look at it from an economic point of view, realizing that there's an increase in the cost, the cost of living, you are paying back in cheaper dollars. So it's not totally wrong to go ahead and bond. You've got to be careful how much you bond. There's no doubt about that. But one thing, you know, everybody keeps mentioning I-95. Well, 95 between New Haven and New York, yeah, you might be able to get away with, you know, having the feds agree to your putting tolls there. You might be able to get away with it up in, around Hartford for certain hours of the day or maybe even sometimes around Danbury. But there's a lot of the state where a lot of these tolls, towers have been suggested. Federal government's not going to buy that, I don't believe, because of the fact that there is not congestion. They will buy it to solve congestion issues. By attempting to solve congestion issues, you're putting more stress on the local roads, however. So, overall, I do not think it's something that's going to benefit. I believe, to me, it's just another road tax. We already pay, certainly as was noted, one of the highest gas taxes in the country. What didn't get mentioned, there's also a tax at the wholesale level, which nobody else in New England has to the best of my knowledge. So we're paying to buy gasoline, we're paying the 44 cents a gallon that we see, but we're also paying on the wholesale side that, because that gets passed along. All this is going to do with the, with the, with the tolls is going to increase costs of delivering everything in the state that comes in from out-of-state that is within the state. It's not going to be to anybody's benefit. It's not going to lead to better accountability at, on the Hartford level. What we need to do is figure out how to knock the costs down to begin with in terms of the administration cost. And secondly, then, I think for all that, I'm not a big fan of bonding, I think we're better off bonding and trying to go ahead and do it that way rather than adding a road tax. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Matarazzo, thanks for your patience.
Good evening. Thank you. How's it?
If you could just remind us who you are for the record and where you live.
Rock Matarazzo, 431 North Main Street.
Thank you.
As many of you know, I have a small business, but I, I run several trucks. We service all the state of Connecticut. So this is going to definitely have an impact on my business, which I'm going to have to forward the additional expenses onto my clients, my customers. I would hope that Wallingford would get behind Mr. Fishbein's proposal and support him on this. I think that these tolls are just another means for the state to collect money, which at some point will be deferred elsewhere. As long as I've lived in this state, I don't know of any time the roads have been in any superb condition. And I, I grew up there, so, and I don't know that I've seen the roads where tolls are implemented now in any better condition than they are here. So I, I don't know what these other states are doing with the funds, but I don't see it being spent on, on their roadways the way maybe it should be or was proposed to be. I think all the residents in Connecticut are going to feel the, uh, burden of, of this new tax and it's going to trickle down. It's, it's going to be felt in, in our pockets when we go to the grocery store, um, on all the products we buy, on all the materials I buy for construction. I, I, it, prices never go down and, and taxes always seem to get implemented to address cost and then it really has no effect. I would, I would, and just informally in the last couple of days, I put sheets together for anybody against the tolls and any Wallingford resident against the tolls. I came up with 100 signatures rather quickly. I believe people want the roadways addressed. Of course they do. And Counselor Zandry's comments, I mean, I know at some point, the way technology's going, we're going to have much more, seeing much more, many more electric cars. Again, I understand where you were coming from, but, um, I think, uh, I think also that I, I just don't, I just don't, and many others I talked to don't believe that these tolls are, are the answer. As Mr. Beaumont said and the other gentleman, I, I think it's just, just another tax burden on the residents of, of Connecticut, residents of Wallingford. I know myself, in, in some of the weekend trips we make, we may start to rethink them. We may not go to Blueback Square in Hartford for cheesecake, you know? We may not go to West Orange Mall as, as a lot of people don't anymore, do any, mostly, I, I know my family, my kids are all online shoppers now. They very rarely go to the stores anyway. But, uh, I just, again, would, would hope that Wallingford can get behind this and support Mr. Fishbein's proposal. Thank you.
My name is Bob Baccino and I live at A. Cooper Avenue. First, I want to thank the council for allowing us the opportunity to express our opinion. But, but I want, I want to agree with the gentleman who spoke before. I mean, why aren't we looking at, why is the cost per mile in Connecticut one of the highest in the country to maintain our roads? Isn't that a, a better way to look than tax to citizens? I mean, I, I see so many of my friends who are retiring and the first thing they say is, "It's too expensive living in Connecticut. I have to move." Why is that? Why is that? Why does AARP have us listed as one of the worst places or most expensive places to retire? They all say Connecticut's a great state, beautiful location, has a lot of benefits, but as far as expenses, it's one of the most expensive. If you look at business magazines, the one of the worst places to start a business, Connecticut. And now we want to raise the taxes and, and increase the tolls to add to that. I, I don't understand why, it's always the solution to, to increase revenue rather than cut expenses. Why can't we look the other way around? As the gentleman said before, why can't we look at being more efficient with the money we have instead of bringing more money in? That's my, my question. Why, why isn't, it's always, how can we raise more revenue instead of how can we lower expenses? Thank you.
Mr. Stancuna and then Mr. Burkhardt.
Why, why isn't, it's always, how can we raise more revenue instead of how can we lower expenses? Thank you.
Mr. Stancuna and then Mr. Burkhardt.
Daryl Stancuna, 18, Old Village Circle. I was up in Hartford a couple of weeks ago when this came out in discussion with Bob Stefanowski against the tolls coming, and I'm up here tonight in Wallingford. I'm glad that Counselor Fishbein has brought this attention and is very active with updating the residents of what's going on with bills and that are being proposed and whatnot. So thank you very much, Mr. Fishbein. Much appreciated. I first of all like to mention that right now, we have new drivers adding into Connecticut, all across the country, around the world and whatnot, but we're talking Connecticut. Drivers are being added constantly. Motor vehicle is always packed. If anyone has been there recently, any of them, it takes hours just to be seen and whatnot. And there's all kinds of cash flow being revenue there. So as far as money towards the roads, I mean, we have new drivers, you have a lot more insurances, you have new cars, used cars, whatever, we have more vehicles now on the streets. Every morning, when I watch Fox 61, I see all the car accidents all over the place, the highways are congested. Nobody's going anywhere right now. These tolls haven't even started yet, and every morning you put on Fox 61 and you see Farmington, Norwalk, same places, Hartford, everywhere, it's always backed up right now. It all takes us one little here fraction of a car accident, and everyone's day is ruined by a couple hours for a commute. So with that being said, if we add this supposed revenue, which we had some great people that spoke up here tonight about 1985 and whatnot, money is supposed to have been spent on roads and trust issue with what's going on with our politics and whatnot, but we still have to trust the system. We have to still trust it. We have to still believe in it because without it, we can't conquer anything. So I wanted to mention that point, that we do have to have faith in this and that we can make a difference, and that this proposal of tolls is just going to add more and more vehicles on the back roads because people are going to want to escape from paying these tolls. And in front of your houses where it's a nice view of the woods, you're going to see an 18-wheeler truck right in front of your house all the time. And then you're going to have on top of it these kids that are trying to commute to colleges that can't even afford already, you know, put gas in their cars, never mind everyday paying tolls, and then have to reach their universities and then have to worry about crossing the street because it's going to be backed up with trucks and very dangerous, and we're going to have so many casualties on our hands coming up with this. There's going to be a lot more accidents. This is a horrific event that's going to occur if we bring these tolls in. It's not going to be a solution. It's going to be a total devastation. You're not going to have fire service being able to respond on time to rescue people from fires, from medical conditions. They're not going to be able to get through the roads. No one has mentioned that. So as far as trying to get response with police and fire trucks, it's just not going to happen. So you're going to see a lot of untimely deaths due from not being able to make it to the hospitals. So I, I really want people to think about that, about your medical and whatnot, and that it's very important to keep our police and firemen, our news crews that can respond and update the residents of Connecticut what's going on in our state. We need that. So really think this through, people, that this thing about, you know, it's, we're going to get money from out of states and you see some license plates one hour. If you find out the facts, 77% of the Connecticut residents are going to be funding these tolls. So this pipe dream drama of delusion that we're going to get all these out-of-state people, that's a false facade. We're going to be paying for it in this state, wherever you go, like someone mentioned going to Hartford. People aren't going to go out and travel. The economy's going to collapse even more. So financially, you're going to see a lot more people, like the man said in the audience, he's not going to go to West Farms Mall. You're going to see a lot more people not go out to concerts, to events and whatnot. So really think about that. And on top of it, look out your window and enjoy the view of, you know, if, if you have a nice field and grass and trees, guess what? You're going to be see a bunch of trucks and a lot more ambulances and police trying to get by, and they can't. So that's what's going to happen. Thank you. So reconsider this.
If there's no one else, can I let Mr. Gross go before you, Mr. Burkhardt? Thank you. Since you've already spoken.
Bob Gross, Long Hill Road. I've just been listening to it, and I do have to say to Mr. Zandry, he's, in my opinion, he's right. I mean, unless you can come up with a way that you're going to fund these roads, what are you going to do? And I don't know whether Mr. Stancuna's numbers are right. I have no idea. But if it is 77% funded by the state, that means 23% would be funded from out of state. And if it's 800 million, you're looking close to 200 million would be funded from out-of-state vehicles, which is a sizable chunk. Because eventually, whether it's bonded, as Mr. Beaumont said, and I'm all for, I understand bonding and so forth, but it will be all fall onto the taxpayers of Connecticut. One way or another, we're going to pay it. And if the legislature wants to do something about, to help out the low-income and certain people, I don't know whether it's doable on your part on income tax. We used to have a tax credit for, it doesn't have to be, but you can do it, you shook your head. Doesn't have to be for cars. You can offer a new type of tax and work around it. If your income is such-and-such level, you're getting a $50 or $100 back on your income tax. And whether you even pay the income tax, because you might be below the level, you still can get $100 or $200, whatever the number is. You can make it more palatable for low-income people and for students, any way you want to do it. Yes, you can't probably say, "All right, if you drive the road, you're going to get that X number of dollars." But you can do it a different way, and you know you can, because you can make any law you want, and you can make any type of rebate you want, and you can say what it is, but you know what it really is going to be. Unless you can come up with some other way, I don't know how you can, I'm not, I'm not for tolls. I don't want to go pay tolls. When I used to have a, or go up to Massachusetts occasionally, we'd be on the Mass Pike, and every exit, there's a, there's a gantry, there's, there's a, there's a meter, and you pay every mile you go. And it's, I didn't see cars getting off the road. It's tough to get off the road because every time you're on the highway, you're getting taxed, but to go around it, it's very difficult. So I just hope the council thinks about that, and hopefully the state could figure a way around it. But until they can, I don't know what you're going to do. Thank you.
Mr. Morgenstein, will you defer to the gentleman in the red sweater who already started walking? Thank you.
Willard Francis, 518 Pilgrim Harbor. I've listened, thank you, Representative Fishbein, I appreciate the fact that you presented this motion tonight. I've listened to some of the conversations about the administrative costs.
If you could get closer to the microphone.
Certainly. The administrative costs and also the costs of the roads per se. Also, the administrative costs in, in Connecticut are $99,000 a mile, whereas the average is $11,000 a mile throughout the country. The cost of our roads is $499,000 a mile, whereas throughout the country, it's 177 on average. There's something fundamentally wrong with the way our costs are being compiled. I would suggest an audit should be performed, certainly on the Highway Department, but maybe throughout all the departments in, in our government. You talked about the fact that we have federal funds, and we stand to lose those. I think it's well over $500 million a year we get in federal funds. I don't know how much of those we lose, but we lose that money coming in from outside, whereas we get money perhaps from people coming through our state, although some people are not going to be having toll plates or whatever it's going to take, EZ-PADs. So we have to send out letters to them and try to get, what, 50 cents, a dollar? Not very, not very efficient. As a matter of fact, I'm hearing today about some of the costs for having to oversee, and, and I heard mention of it today. It's a huge amount of money. I'm really surprised at how much it's going to cost. So I would suggest that bonding is, is a practical way to do it. Certainly, it does put the responsibility on Connecticut residents, but what it does do also, it stops at some point. It doesn't continue, whereas tolls will be there forever. So I would be in favor of bonding, and I appreciate the motion, and I hope you folks vote for it.
Mr. Morgenstein.
Larry Morgenstein, South Main Street. So I don't think anybody in this room doesn't believe that there's a problem with the roads. That's what we've got, and that's a result of decades of raiding funds, not dedicating funds. It's happened, and it's happened in so many things in this state. We're to the point now where even the money dedicated to that goes, 40% of that total that goes to it, goes to pay off for past things. It goes to pay for bonding. So the thing is, is there's no magic solution here. There's only going to be tough solutions. Something has to pay for the roads. They have to be done. It's not going to happen through magic. What this resolution does is ties hands. There's income to be derived from people out of state. Trucks go through the state. We all know that the bigger vehicles take more wear and tear out of these roads. It's a fact. It happens over and over again. The wear and tear is facilitated by these big vehicles going through, and a lot of it from out of state. It's not going to change. So again, to take off the table, income seems crazy, and then you put it back on the people of Connecticut. So really, you offer a resolution that really says, "Take it off the table." So in essence, you're saying, "Well, what else is there on the table?" Well, the Republicans have theirs. Well, bond it. Well, part of the problem with this state right now is that we've bonded and bonded, and we're paying for past bonds, and we're going to kick it down the road. I mean, this is a phrase that people love to use. "We're going to kick it down the road once again." So maybe I won't pay for it immediately, but maybe my kids will, or their kids, or the next person. You have to pay for things eventually. And if you have revenue, it's a use tax, people that are using this resource. I'm not saying that this is something that anybody's going to really love. I think, I hold my nose with the idea of tolls, but I also find the idea of just bonding over and over again to be irresponsible to, to put it on other people, future people. And people deride that all the time. So with two things on the table, you're going to take one off on a resolution that ultimately doesn't mean anything. I mean, it expresses some people's desires, and it'll go up to the state, and you could say, "Well, the Wallingford Council passed this resolution." Okay. But ultimately, it doesn't change the problem. You still have the problem, and it will require income. You could look for efficiencies. That's great, but it's still going to cost money. You don't build roads without income. You don't do it without revenue. In essence, it's fine if you want to vote for this resolution, but again, ultimately, tough decisions have to be made. I don't think anybody's going to like paying for it, but it's necessary. You invest in things. You invest in the future. Do you really want to take this off the table? And again, essence, in essence, you're not even taking it off the table if you vote for this tonight. But if you want to, it's a gesture. Sometimes symbolic gestures are fine. I've certainly encouraged it, but really, that's all it is.
Mr. Burkhardt, did you still want to speak?
Robert Burkhardt, 68, Simpson Avenue, Apartment 2. I've, I've have only 10 seconds to say this. I like to try to find the pros and cons of everything, and I have to say, I do miss the Toll House cookies.
Well, why don't we end with that and bring it back to the council for further discussion? Counselor Morgenstein.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. So what I want to say is that I am putting my support fully behind Counselor Fishbein to go to Hartford and to legislate this issue and to have these meaningful sorts of conversations with the people who have been put in power to have them. I here in Wallingford am not governing at the state level, and I tonight will not be put into a place of saying where I stand on tolls. It's not my governing body. There are a lot of issues up in Hartford, some of which have come from many, many administrations prior to the more recent ones. And that's where I would like you to be putting your energy, please, Counselor Fishbein. Thank you.
Counselor Marone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I agree with Mr. Morgenstein that spoke, that this is largely a symbolic gesture because clearly we have no authority in this matter. But this body is no stranger to symbolic gestures. I think the resolution we passed, or the ordinance we passed several meetings ago with regard to the tobacco, I think was a largely symbolic gesture. I think we all supported that. I think this is sort of in that same vein. I don't think anyone in this room thinks that, we all agree that there's a, there is a, there's a spending problem at the state, we have a revenue problem at the state, and I don't think that anyone thinks that by adding more money to the pot, it's going to improve the situation at the state. The state's like an addict with money, and you can't give an addict more drugs and expect to solve the problem. So for that reason, I think the, if, if even just for a symbolic purpose, I think it makes sense to pass this resolution.
Counselor Fishbein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to address some of the things that I heard. So it would be great if the governor would perhaps order a forensic audit of the special transportation fund. That has not happened. So as far as getting the answers about why we spend 10 times more than any other state in the country to maintain and administer our roads remains an outstanding question. You might have recently read in the newspaper about Massachusetts, their tolling system is owed about $11 million by out-of-state residents, and the problem is that they have no, there is no process to collect that. So while we might be looking at the pie in the sky that, you know, out-of-state residents are going to have a liability with them driving through onto the roads, you know, if they don't have this pass, FastPass or something like that, there is no way to collect it. You know, the bonding over and over again is not the plan. You know, I'm trying not to be partisan here, but the, what some Republicans have proposed is that you utilize the money that's already appropriated in the special transportation fund, and if you need more for an actual transportation project, then that goes before the Bonding Committee for the possible passage of a bond. It isn't that we take all transportation projects and we just automatically bond. So I don't want anybody to get that impression because that's just not, not the situation. So, you know, I just wanted to address those things. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anything else from the council? Counselor Zandry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this question goes back to Counselor Fishbein because I want to get a little clarity on it. So with the out-of-state motorists, when they get tagged by plate, you know, like if I'm up in Massachusetts and I don't have an EZ-PAD, they're going to read my plate. Now, I actually have traveled to Virginia, and it didn't read my EZ-PAD, and I got the letter in the mail. And the letter in the mail basically identified that I had to pay the out-of-state and the plate fee, because when you do it by plate, by mail, they charge you a surcharge. And the letter is sent for the amount due, and it, it's almost a trivial amount, it's like $1.76 more than the $4 flat toll, whatever the bridge might have been. If you don't pay that in 14 days, it comes back to you with a $50 fine on top of it. So my question is, I agree that a lot of people will scoff at it and they'll just toss it away, but doesn't it also act like an out, like a parking ticket? When they eventually come through and they eventually get pulled over for one thing, don't they get tagged for the other ticket that they've got? Isn't it enforceable in that manner?
I believe the only way that it's enforceable is if that vehicle... I believe the only way that it's enforceable is if that vehicle, so you go through Virginia again and you get pulled over by the police, then there may be something in the system. But you can drive through Virginia again, you're going to get pinged again on the system and it's going to be the same process all over again. There is no process for them to enforce that against an out-of-state resident.
Right. They're not going to come to Connecticut and arrest me, but the next time I'm over there, I run the risk, just like a parking ticket. If I go to New Haven, I get a parking ticket, the next time I'm in New Haven, they see right away, they're not going to put another ticket on my car, they're going to tow it away, they'll boot it or they'll tow it away.
That is practically possible.
Yeah. So, I mean, I don't want to overstress on one side that we're going to get a lot of these people, but I mean, you are going to add your individual insult to injury if you're going to not pay a $4.00 toll by having $50.00 lumped on top of it and then potentially be more, you know, on top of it for that matter. Just a question on the comment about 10 times more than any other state per mile for the roads. Without a doubt, just looking over here on Center Street, we all can agree that it's a debacle what the state's doing for that road. You couldn't even defend that if you wanted to. What I want to make sure that I understand is you said 10 times more than any other state, or was that 10 times more than the average across the country? Because the gentleman earlier had indicated about 100,000 or so on average and we're doing 10 times more. It's 10 times more than the average cost, not the next state down on the list. Is that correct?
Agreed.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I understood that correctly because there's a propensity to not understand that. We should not be 10 times more than the average, but we are definitely going to be, Connecticut being up in the north and the northeast, we're going to be more expensive than the roads in the south. Now, should we be 10 times more than the median? No, without a doubt. It should be looked into. Mr. Beaumont is exactly correct. When we've got a problem operating and managing, that needs to be looked at, it needs to be addressed. The bonding issue got brought up and we've brought it up at the council level before. We pay cash for all kinds of things when we could be bonding certain things smartly and intelligently. Nobody in this room with cash tomorrow is going to go out and buy a house for cash, even if you had it, because there is a time value to money going forward. But you got to do it responsibly. At the same time, you can't kick it down the road so far that future generations get stuck holding the bag. And I've heard that a lot, you know, being Generation X, I get it a lot from the baby boomers. "That's all right, we took care of that. It's up for you to figure it out now." You loaded us up with debt and we have to figure out how to pay for it because the debt wasn't taken on responsibly. It was taken on to resolve an issue with the understanding or the idea that future dollars are going to be more to come by, and then when it doesn't resolve, it's just our problem to figure out. I didn't like to have to take that medicine and I'm not going to pass that down either. The only way I'm going to vote to bond for anything, whether it's for here or to support something that goes to Hartford, is if it's responsibly done. You don't take on debt you can't pay and you don't take on debt that you can't manage. And that's dangerous to do. So, I just wanted to kind of set the tone on that one, too. Without a doubt, something has to be done, but we need a solution. We can't just say, "Yes, we support this," without looking at alternatives because the alternatives might be better. We also can't throw out the baby with the bathwater by saying, "This just does not work," without coming up with something else. So, maybe we need to take a step back before we vote yes or no or push tolls or bump a tax and figure out what is it we really need to do to attack this thing from all sides. And that's really where I would ask Counselor Fishbein as a representative and Mary and Liz and everybody else that supports Hartford, Mr. Candelora, who I don't even get an opportunity to speak to. I'm going to come tomorrow night because I want to hear the discussion. I want to hear everybody's thoughts on it. And I need that before I can cast a vote either way. So, I wholeheartedly appreciate this being brought up here for this discussion, without a doubt. And I appreciate everybody that came here tonight to offer their thoughts and opinions too. And I hope you're all here tomorrow night because tomorrow night's that special symposium on it. So, I appreciate the opportunity to speak up here and I'll be looking forward to the opportunity to sit and listen tomorrow. So, thank you.
Counselor Chertel.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to call the question.
Second. There's been a motion to call the question in a second. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Fishbein?
Yes.
Laffin?
Yes.
Laterno?
Yes.
Marone?
Yes.
Morganstein?
No.
Chertel?
Yes.
Zandry?
No.
Chairman Savoni?
I vote yes.
Motion passes.
Time to call a roll, the roll on the vote on the resolution.
Yep, one second, sorry. Fishbein?
Yes.
Thank you. Laffin?
Yes.
Laterno?
Yes.
Marone?
Yes.
Morganstein?
I'd like to abstain on the grounds that I don't believe that a town counselor going on the record on voting on this resolution is appropriate. Thank you.
So, you're going to abstain?
I'm going to abstain.
Thank you very much. Chertel?
No.
Zandry?
No.
Chairman Savoni?
I vote yes. That's five.
The resolution passes.
Yes is one, abstention three, no.
There being no further business on the agenda, motion to adjourn is in order for this meeting.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor of adjournment signify by staying aye.
Aye.
This will adjourn this regular town council meeting. We will take a five-to-10-minute break and then we will resume for a budget workshop.